Good evening. Thank you for joining us. I'm Dan Bates with the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. This evening is a partnership between Miami University Regionals and the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. We believe that voters should enter the polls informed and ready to vote for the candidate that reflects their priorities as a resident. It matters who represents your own school board, but many voters do not realize the role of school board member. The school board sets policies to establish rules guiding district operations and student success. They approve budget and oversee financial decisions and resource allocation. They hire the superintendent and therefore evaluate the district's top leader. However, they do not run the school district. They also serve as a voice for parents, students, and staff. The school board also ensures accountability by monitoring performance and compliance with laws. A major role is strategic planning that shapes long-term goals for academic and operational excellence. In Hamilton, we are blessed with elected officials that are informed, engaged, and approachable. Tonight is an opportunity for you to get to learn about the individuals who will be on our school board so that you may feel more comfortable in approaching them in the future. Now to begin with our forum. First, we'll review the bios of each candidate. Ashley Hopkins is a lifelong educator and first-generation college graduate from Appalachian, Ohio. With over 20 years of experience in public education and nonprofit leadership, she now directs Miami University's Trio Upward Bound Program at Hamilton High School and teaches Appalachian Studies. Ashley earned her bachelor's degree from the Ohio State University and both her master's and doctorate in education from Ohio University. Since moving to Hamilton in 2017, she has embraced the city as her permanent home and works passionately to expand educational access for all. She serves on the boards of the Hamilton Central MCA and the Urban Appalachian Community Coalition, is active in the Lindenwald Kiwanis Club, and has led successful fundraising efforts for numerous causes. Ashley lives in Prospect Hill with her husband and three dogs, is a proud stepmother to two, and recently became a grandmother. Her work reflects a deep commitment to equity, education, and community engagement. David T. Davidson is a lifelong Hamilton resident, practicing attorney and proud graduate of Hamilton City Schools. He earned his bachelor's degree in business with a minor in education from Wittenberg University and has a law degree from the University of Toledo. For over 35 years, David has served the Hamilton community through his legal practice and public service. He has held elected positions on Hamilton City Council and currently serves on the Hamilton Board of Education. His three sons graduated from the district and two of his grandchildren are current students, giving him a personal stake in the future of local education. David is deeply committed to civic leadership, educational excellence, and supporting Hamilton families. His experience, dedication, and longstanding ties to the community make him a strong advocate for public schools and a trusted voice in shaping the future of Hamilton's economic educational landscape. Carrie Mancuso is a lifelong resident of Hamilton, a proud graduate of Hamilton City Schools and a parent of a current Hamilton High School student. She earned her bachelor's degree in mass communications with a minor in marketing from Miami University and has served as public relations manager for the Lane Libraries for 23 years. Carrie is a founding member, board member, and secretary of the Hamilton Parks Conservancy and has volunteered extensively across the school district. Her deep roots in the community and passion for public education fuel her commitment to serving on the Hamilton City School Board. Carrie brings a strong background in communications, a history of civic involvement, and a personal connection to the district. She is dedicated to advocating for students, families, and the future of Hamilton schools and looks forward to continuing her service in a leadership role that reflects her lifelong commitment to the city she calls home. Now each candidate will have one minute to do an opening statement, and we will start with Carrie Mancuso.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening. I'd like to thank the Chamber, Miami Regionals, TV Hamilton, my fellow candidates, and the viewers that are both here and at home for taking the time to participate this evening. I'm honored to be here as both an alumnus of the Hamilton City School District and the parent of a current student. The community schools gave me a strong foundation, and I now want to give back by helping ensure they remain a place where every child can thrive. I'm running for school board because I believe our focus should always be on students. That means providing safe and welcoming schools, fostering good relationships with our educators and staff, using taxpayers' resources wisely, and strengthening communication between families, teachers, and the board. As someone who has walked these halls myself and now has a child learning here, I understand both our tradition and the needs of today's students. I will listen carefully, work respectfully with others, and make thoughtful decisions that put students first.
Thank you, Carrie. Ashley?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight and for investing in Hamilton's youth and schools. My name is Dr. Ashley Hopkins, and I'm running for Hamilton City School Board because I believe that every child in our community deserves a high-quality public education that prepares them for a strong future. I'm a first-generation college graduate, a former public school educator, and I now serve as the director of Miami University's Trio Upward Bound Program, a college preparatory program for future first-generation college students at Hamilton High School. For over 20 years, I've worked to expand access to education and support students and families through challenges like food insecurity, housing, and college readiness. I'm running to put students first, to build stronger school, family, community partnerships, and to ensure fiscal responsibility in every decision we make. Hamilton's kids are our futures, so let's give them the tools to succeed, and let's do it together. I'd be honored to earn your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. David, David sir?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave Davidson, and I was born and raised right here in Hamilton, Ohio. I was educated here in Hamilton through the Hamilton City Schools, graduating from Hamilton TAFT in 1979. My three boys graduated from this district, and I'm proud to say I have two children in the district. I am proud, I am a practicing attorney with over 39 years of experience, and I've served this community on both the Hamilton City Council and the Hamilton School Board. I am running for reelection because I care deeply about our students, our teachers, and the future of Hamilton. I've seen firsthand the progress we've made academically, financially, and in public perception, but there's still a lot of work to do. I want to continue focusing on student achievement, workforce readiness, and maintaining self or safe and welcoming schools. I would like to thank Dan Bates, the Chamber of Commerce, Miami Regional, and TV Hamilton for sponsoring this forum tonight, and to Ashley and Carrie, I look forward to working with you two over the next four years and moving Hamilton City Schools forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we will start with our questions. Question number one, to follow up on what was previously stated as far as what the roles and responsibilities are, what do you think are the key responsibilities, and why are you the best candidate to perform those duties? And we will start with Ashley Hopkins.
Thanks, Dan. I would describe the role of a school board member as very similar to a board of trustees for a large corporation. Where in the corporate setting, the board of trustees serves as the supervisory council for the chief executive officer and the chief financial officer, the school board serves as a supervisory council for the superintendent and treasurer of the district. The school board member is there to guide, mentor, support, ask questions, and offer feedback to district leaders as they navigate a variety of decisions and issues. Likewise, the board is responsible for holding district leaders accountable as good stewards of public resources and as leaders who act with integrity and strong moral character. I'm best suited for this role because of my extensive professional experience in managing educational funds, developing and implementing curricula, utilizing data and research and decision-making, and overseeing large projects from start to finish. Likewise, through my work and volunteer activities in the city, I've been able to develop strong relationships with many individuals and organizations, further enhancing connection between the schools and the community.
Thank you, Ashley. David Davidson, same question.
School board members are responsible for setting district policies, overseeing budgets, academic performance, hiring and evaluating the superintendent and treasurer, and ensuring compliance with state and federal law. Most importantly, we are here to represent the voices and values of our community. I'm a lifelong Hamilton resident, and as previously stated, I'm a graduate of the Hamilton City Schools, a parent of graduates from the Hamilton City Schools, and a grandparent of students currently enrolled. I bring not just a personal investment, but over 35 years of professional experience in prior board service. I know the system. I know the stakes. I know how to lead with transparency, accountability, and care. That's why I'm the best candidate to continue this work.
Thank you, Carrie Mancuso. Same question.
A school board member is responsible for understanding the many facets of their school system. They help to develop and maintain the vision and policy and help direct and approve the school system's budget. A school board member works as a member of a team to guide the superintendent and treasurer of the system and also act as a liaison between the administration and staff and the community. I am a great candidate for this position because I have a long history with the school system from my own student experience to being the parent of a student, but also because of my partnership experience through my professional role in the community. I have been involved in vision work for the city of Hamilton for 20 years and have deep connections throughout the community that will make me an approachable point of contact between the school system and the community. I also have many great relationships with teachers and staff in the district who know they can trust me to get the job done. I look forward to building that trust and confidence throughout the school system.
Thank you, Carrie. Question number two, taking into account the recent and vast improvement in outcomes for Hamilton City Schools, what are the three top priorities you believe we need to focus on to continue improving? And we're starting with David.
I've seen firsthand both our challenges and our remarkable strides we've made in the Hamilton City Schools. To keep that momentum, I believe we must focus on three key priorities. First, supporting the whole student academically and emotionally by expanding intervention, strengthening mental health services, and ensuring that every student feels safe and supported. Second, investing in our teachers and staff. Great schools start with great teachers, which we have. We must recruit and retain talent with a competitive pay, meaningful professional development, and a culture of respect. Third, deepening family and community engagement. Our schools thrive when parents, local businesses, civic partners are at the table, sharing ideas, communicating clearly, and building opportunities for our kids. The progress is real, but we can't stop here.
Thank you. Carrie, same question.
I am so pleased with the upward trajectory of Hamilton's outcomes recently. When compared to similar districts, we rate highly and need to maintain that growth. We need to focus on teacher retention. Seasoned teachers provide a wealth of knowledge and experience that provides stability and insight for the buildings they work in and the students they teach. We must find ways to keep our teachers in the district for the long term for these reasons. Increased enrollment. As factors such as vouchers and projected lower birth rates bring challenges to enrollment numbers, we must promote our offerings in such a way that people choose Hamilton for their children's education. And we must continue to find ways to provide equitable experiences for our students and support diverse populations. Overcoming language and socioeconomic barriers to successfully educate all students needs to be a top priority.
Ashley Hopkins, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. To continue the district's forward and upward movement, we must do the following. First and foremost, we must ensure that school funds are invested in our students' well-being and learning in ways that guarantee the maximum return on investment through data-driven decision-making. Students must come first, and they must come first always. Second, we must continue to open the lines of communication to maintain a strong relationship with the city, to develop relationships in the community that create opportunities and prosperity for our students, to engage parents and families in the educational environment, and to listen to and honor the voices of our teachers, aides, and boots-on-the-ground staff. Open, multi-directional, and effective communication is imperative to the continued growth and success of our district. Finally, we have to stay the course. In education, we often rapidly change teaching methods and curricula, opting for bells and whistles and competitive pricing and compelling marketing campaigns, but we fail to give various ideas enough time to see them come to fruition or to be able to assess them confidently. On the flip side, we have to remain agile enough to pivot, innovate, and implement new ideas and strategies when things are not working.
Thank you. Question number three, what do you think is the biggest challenge facing Ohio public schools, and what will be your plan to address it locally for Hamilton as a board member? And we're starting with Carrie.
I believe that one of the biggest challenges we'll face in the years to come is state budget changes and financial uncertainty. We must work cooperatively as a board with the superintendent and treasurer to plan for uncertainty. As these conversations are already underway at the Board of Education, I am taking time to meet with administration to learn about the budget and their plans to be ready for the future so that I can hit the ground running. I know this will be a topic of interest and concern to the school and community as a whole and will require thoughtful and flexible plans to manage.
Thank you. Ashley?
Thank you. First, I believe there are many pressing challenges facing our public schools today and that you'd likely get a different answer depending on who you ask, and every one of those answers would be correct. From the role of the school board member, I believe school funding and finance is the most important issue we are facing and which we have capacity and authority to act upon. As we face a variety of funding challenges at all levels of governance, local to federal, it will be imperative that we're working together to ensure funds are managed transparently and with scrutiny in the best interest of our students and the long-term sustainable financial health of the district. As a school board member, I vow to always be a voice in the room for our most vulnerable students and families when financial decisions are being made and to act with transparency and integrity. As a veteran educator experienced in educational finance, I am uniquely qualified to navigate the ongoing challenges facing school funding, to advocate for our students' needs, and to communicate the complexity of school finance in order to raise awareness and understanding among our constituents.
Thank you. David Davidson?
One of the biggest challenges facing Ohio public schools is adequate, equitable school funding. We've all three said that. We have a state legislature who frankly wants to do away with public education, and they're hurting us in the pocketbook. Ohio still heavily relies on property taxes, which creates funding gaps between districts and places too much burden on communities like ours. The results? Schools are forced to do more with less, juggling with while juggling costs, state mandates, and increasing student needs. My plan to deal with this? First, maximize every dollar with transparent budgeting. I will ensure Hamilton City Schools continues to manage funds responsibly, focusing on direct classroom support, student mental health, and retention and recruitment. I will advocate on the state level and fight for full implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan. And thirdly, I will work to strengthen community partnerships that will give our students real-world opportunities without new tax burdens.
Thank you very much. Our next question, question number four, what role could or should school board members have in the overall economic development of the city of Hamilton as it ties into the quality of education from the district and overall perception of Hamilton as a desired place to live? And we'll start with Ashley.
Thanks, Dan. I love this question. So first, high-quality public schools attract businesses who are looking to employ high-quality professionals, and this is twofold. First, high-quality public schools produce high-performing students who become innovative, reliable, and hard-working employees. Secondly, high-quality public schools are attractive to professionals seeking places to affordably raise a family. Second of all, the future economic development of the city is dependent in part on the continued growth and success of the district because of this impact the district has on attracting new business and industry as well as attracting and producing high-performing workers. Not only should we be providing educational opportunities that align with industries like manufacturing, which is currently our largest industry in Hamilton, but with other high-need industries that offer high-earning potential such as those in medicine, technology, and engineering. Finally, the relationships the board member has within the community can impact the opportunities made available to our students through the exchange of ideas and shared connections.
Thank you, Ashley. David Davidson?
A strong public school system is the foundation of a thriving community. As a school board member, I believe we play a vital role in Hamilton's economic development, not just as stewards of education, but as civic leaders shaping our city's future. High-quality schools attract families, businesses, and investment. Our graduates form the backbone of Hamilton's workforce. The board should be an active partner in the development efforts, ensuring that what happens in our classrooms aligns with the city's goals. We already have a very strong working relationship with the city of Hamilton on these issues, and I am committed to building on those partnerships to keep Hamilton growing and thriving.
Thank you, David. Carrie?
Ditto. I'm kidding, but I'm not kidding. Okay, don't start my day. The school board does have an active and advantageous relationship with the city of Hamilton and specifically the Economic Development Department. I frankly feel that the strength of this partnership is crucial to the success of both the city and the schools. The schools need to maintain a place at the table in economic development discussions, ensuring that the future of our school system is considered when making these decisions. The city will enjoy more lucrative deals, the better our school district's reputation is, so this is an indirect reason we need to focus on positive outcomes. The impact is more direct when discussing residential real estate, which relies in part on good schools, to help promote a desirable city to people considering a move to Hamilton. When we all have a seat at the table together, great things happen. The school system's partnership with Hamilton's Economic Development Team is a strong example of this.
Thank you very much. Question number five, we'll start with David Davidson. If the school board as a whole was going to make a board decision that you were not in favor of, what would you do and could you support it? Please explain.
As a board member, my responsibility is to represent the best interest of all students and our community. If the board is considering a decision I personally disagree with, which has happened in the last four years, I will make my case respectfully, backed by facts, data, and community input. I believe in an open dialogue and collaboration, but once the vote is taken, I also believe in honoring the outcome. I would support the board's decision publicly even if I initially disagreed because stability and trust in our schools matter. What I won't do is create division. My goal is to always work constructively to move the district forward even when compromise is required.
Thank you. Carrie, same question.
The school board is a team of five members. I say team because it's critical that we agree on the fundamentals of our reasons to exist, and I feel confident that we will agree on that level. The board follows a democratic process with majority rule, which is something I will always respect. If I'm not in favor or in the majority on an item put before us, I will present my argument, back my position up with facts and/or examples, just as Dave will, and I will then respect the decision of the majority. One member of any team is not always going to have the right answer, so it's important to consider different perspectives, sometimes agree to disagree, and be willing to move forward as a united front once the vote is done. When disagreements persist, I would expect the board to maintain open minds and conversation in the appropriate settings in order to find common ground and the best way forward.
Thank you, Carrie Mancuso. Ashley Hopkins?
If I was not in favor of a board decision being made, I would first discuss the issue with other board members to seek out better understanding and potential compromise. I believe it's important to maintain an open mind and to try to view decisions from multiple perspectives. I enjoy working with others across difference to develop our best and most innovative solutions. I love the challenge of problem-solving, compromising, and finding common ground. If no such agreement or understanding could be made, I would stand firm in my position and vote down the decision depending on the particular issue. I would be prepared to explain and defend my position while keeping an open mind to other perspectives and being prepared to also support the decision of the board in going forward with a united front.
Thank you very much. Question number six, how would you handle requests by special interest groups or private individuals? What is the protocol, and how would you handle those special interest requests? And we'll start with Carrie.
Thanks, Dan. The board has designated sessions to hear from members of the public, and I would encourage anyone who is interested in proposing or discussing an idea or request to come to these meetings to speak with the board as a whole. Anyone bringing special interest requests to me personally will be directed to a public session to provide their input to the entire board and administrative team. I think it's important for all board members to hear the same information in a setting that will allow us to follow up with thoughtful discussion.
Thank you. Ashley?
As an elected official, I believe school board members have a duty to listen to their constituents. As such, I'd be willing to listen to any group or individual following the appropriate protocols, as Carrie mentioned. Beyond listening to constituents, I would refer them to the superintendent's office and offer to share their concerns or needs with the superintendent for the appropriate person or protocol to be in place. There are too many opportunities to unintentionally compromise or to put our district in the way of harm and our community in the way of harm in a variety of ways. Ensuring we are all operating on the same page within law and policy and with a united message is vital to the success of both the board and the district as a whole.
David Davidson?
As a school board member, my job is to represent all families and taxpayers, not one group or individual. When a special interest group or a private citizen makes a request, I would follow, which I have, the established policy and ensure that all communication is transparent and goes through the proper channels, typically referring them to the superintendent or placing the issue on the board agenda if appropriate. I listen respectfully, but I weigh every request against one standard. Does this serve the best interest of all students and align with our district's mission and policy? I will never let politics or pressure override what's best for our kids, our staff, or our schools.
Thank you very much. Question number seven, the voucher program is an ongoing topic of discussion. What are the benefits and challenges for students? How and what is the potential impact on public education in Hamilton City School District? And we'll start with Ashley.
This is a great question, and it's one that's very important right now and has been important for a while. The proposed benefit of the voucher program is to expand school choice for all students, especially students in rural areas or those who have limited access to high-quality public education. Overall, I'm a supporter of educational choice. I believe every student should have the right to pursue the education that best fits their learning style, needs, and goals, be that private or public, homeschool, vocational, technical training, college, or seminary. However, the challenges with the voucher program are multiple. First, the majority of voucher funds are being accessed by individuals who are already attending private or charter schools and who already have the means to pay for that private education rather than those funds actually going to the students who they were intended to serve. Second, charter and private schools are not held to the same standards as public schools from the hiring requirements for staff to testing requirements for students. Thus, public schools are portrayed as failing by standards that private and charter schools aren't even held to. Third, subsidizing private education by siphoning tax dollars away from our public schools does nothing but increase harm to those public schools and our most vulnerable student populations by further reducing school funding and resources.
Thank you. David Davidson?
This is a very hot topic right now and one I take very seriously. The voucher program, also known as Ed Choice, presents both opportunities and real challenges. While it gives families more school choices, it does so by redirecting public tax dollars away from public schools like Hamilton City Schools. That means fewer resources for our students, which could lead to larger class sizes, reduce programming, and strained support services. The reality is, public schools serve all children regardless of income, background, or need. Vouchers don't always guarantee better outcomes, and they create uneven playing fields. The impact on Hamilton could be significant, especially when every dollar counts. We must advocate for fair funding and continue to make our public schools so strong that families want to stay and not feel they need to leave. That's how we serve every child and protect public education.
Thank you. Carrie?
I am a proponent of school choice for all students. If a family decides that a school experience other than public school is best for them, they should pursue those options. However, I am not in favor of the state's voucher program. It does not provide benefits to our public school students, and it pulls dollars away from our schools, which are required to follow all state standards, and gives money to schools that have no accountability for the same level of quality education. I'm not saying that other schools don't provide quality education, but they do not have to be accountable for the tax dollars that they now receive through vouchers. The result is public schools, including HCSD, bleeding the tax dollars they count on to provide all facets of education to our public school students. I believe that public dollars should stay in public schools to maintain the health of the programs that exist to serve all students.
Thank you, Carrie Mancuso. Question number eight, describe your thoughts and opinions on student-centered education and how it fits or does not fit into the current curriculum of Hamilton City Schools. And we're starting with David Davidson.
Student-centered education prepares students for real life by encouraging curiosity, collaboration, and critical thinking. When students are actively involved in learning, they're more engaged and more likely to succeed. Hamilton has already embraced this project- Hamilton has already embraced this project-based learning and inquiry-driven lessons. However, the current emphasis on standardized testing can create real challenges. These tests often force teachers to focus on narrow content and rigid pacing, which can limit creativity and prevent deeper learning. Students are more than test scores. While we need accountability, overtesting can cause stress, stifle innovation, and shift energy away from developing the whole child. That's why student-centered learning is so important. It brings balance, it helps meet state standards, while also giving students the skills they need in the real world. We should support our teachers with the flexibility, training, and trust to do it well.
Thank you, David. Carrie, same question.
As a parent, I have truly loved the concept of student-centered education and the way Hamilton City Schools have embraced this method. I remember in my daughter's early elementary school years going to a teacher conference, which she actually helped run. The adults, her parents and the teacher, began by listening to her observations and lessons about how her year was going and could be improved. This was implemented, of course, with the guidance from her teacher, but it brought this young student into the discussion in a way I'd never seen before, and it brought ownership and accountability into her work. There are many children in our school district who don't have a lot of parent or adult involvement in their school career. Focusing on a student-centered approach also gives these children more input on how they're doing, what they need to improve, and where they want to go. This student focus continues through higher grades, not just in goal-setting in the classroom, but in how students are tasked with running extracurriculars, events, clubs, pep rallies, and so much more. They are learning leadership in their education and beyond, and I think HCSD is doing a wonderful job fitting this methodology into the curriculum as a whole.
Thank you, Carrie Mancuso. Same question. Ashley Hopkins.
Thank you. As an educator with more than 20 years of experience, whose personal teaching and leadership philosophies are rooted in student-centered education, I can say that I'm more than just a strong advocate for student-centered learning. In student-centered learning, the student is viewed holistically with the understanding that their well-being is deeply intertwined with their ability to perform academically. If we think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we think about those foundational needs: safety, nourishment, rest, and we move up the pyramid to connection, to belonging, and vision. By placing the students' needs at the center of our work, we are able to make strong decisions that support their overall well-being, their academic growth, and their personal achievements. In Hamilton City Schools, we serve a wide variety of students with diverse needs, interests, and goals. We must provide our instructional staff with the resources and support needed to respond to each student in the classroom individually, so that they can define for themselves what it means to be successful, to define for themselves what it means to thrive.
Thank you very much. Question number nine. Regarding student safety. Student safety is one of the most vital responsibilities in any school district. Describe how you will assure close collaboration between other school members and your superintendent, and we start with Carrie.
I agree that school safety is of critical importance to all of our buildings and throughout our school's culture. The Hamilton City School District has protocols in place to handle a wide range of issues that could come up, and I'm learning about these as I prepare to be on the board. Communication, as in all things, is crucial in times of chaos and uncertainty. I have the utmost confidence that our superintendent will keep board members apprised of any situation that is warranted, and that we will work as a team to make sure safety is always a top priority that is being assessed on an ongoing basis. I am developing relationships with the leadership of the school system and the board now, so that I can become a part of the trusted team who will do whatever it takes to ensure the safety of our students and staff at all times. I am committed to being accessible and in close contact with our superintendent and other board members, not only for planned meetings, but for issues that may arise, particularly when it comes to student safety.
Thank you. Ashley Hopkins.
With regard to student safety, there are a number of things we can do to continue to ensure students are able to learn in a safe and healthy environment. First, open lines of rapid communication in alignment with district policies and best practices for risk management are the most important means for protecting students and staff in situations concerning safety. Likewise, regular communication with students and families about various safety measures and resources within the district and the community, such as tips for safe gun ownership or how to spot early warning signs of risk, have been shown to reduce the likelihood of violence in schools. Finally, collaborating with the city, local law enforcement, and prevention agencies and resources such as Envision Partnerships and SELF helps prevent and mitigate issues that create unsafe learning environments by ensuring students and families receive the support they need to thrive. This helps promote a safe and healthy learning environment in Hamilton City Schools and across our greater Hamilton community.
Thank you. David Davidson.
Student safety is a top priority, and that responsibility starts with the school board. I believe in proactive, not reactive, collaboration with the superintendent and my fellow school board members. That means regular briefings on safety protocols, threat assessment, building security, and mental health initiatives. As a board, we must demand transparency and ensure that our superintendent is fully supported, but also held accountable for implementing safety plans. This includes partnerships with local law enforcement, clear communication with parents, and consistent staff training. Safety isn't just about locked doors. It's about the emotional well-being of our students, trust and readiness. I will make sure that our students feel safety is not a checkbox, but a culture. Together, we can build schools where every child feels protective, respected, and ready to learn.
Thank you, David. Our next question, question number 10. Once you are elected to the school board by the voters, what would the public see in the first six months that would affirm you as their choice? And we start with Ashley.
Thank you. In the first six months, the public can expect to see the following from me. First, you'll see a strong and vocal focus on students-first and a student-centered model of education. I will always advocate for our students, including and especially the most vulnerable populations, like students with disabilities or students from lower-income households. You will see me ask thoughtful questions when engaging in decision-making to ensure we are taking into consideration various perspectives, needs, and outcomes. You will see an ethical, data-driven, and research-oriented decision-maker. My vote will always be based on the data and what will best serve our students, not on special interests, not on personal dynamics, and not on partisan politics. You will see an involved school board member who truly loves serving her community, supporting the well-being and success of all Hamilton youth and young adults, and building relationships that support the grand future of our city. You will be sure to see me volunteering across the community and always advocating for and cheering on our students and our schools.
Thank you, Ashley. David Davidson.
If re-elected, the public will see in the first six months what they've come to expect: steady leadership, responsiveness, and results. I'll continue to be present, accessible, and deeply engaged in the work of the board. You will see me advocating for student achievement, supporting teachers, and ensuring transparency in our decisions. I will push forward initiatives to prioritize student well-being, improve academic outcomes, and strengthen our community partnerships. I will also maintain open communication with parents, staff, and stakeholders, because trust is earned, not assumed. The voters placed their confidence in me once before, and in the first six months, they'll see clearly why I've earned that again. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
The public will see that I am visible, I am accessible, and that I am approachable, and I would hope that all of these things will reaffirm their support. I think it's really important in the first months of a new position to listen and learn and understand how things work. While I am focused on that, I will be eager to hear what the needs and questions are from not only our school community, but also our voters.
Thank you. That concludes all of our pre-prepared questions. Now we have a couple of questions from the audience. Our first question, which I'll give you just a moment to think about. We've kind of covered this, but we'll revisit it. If you were approached by a religious or special interest group, would you support them taking students off campus for instruction based upon their programs?
Dan, could you repeat that question again, please?
Yes. If you were approached, if approached, by a religious or special interest group, would you support them taking students off campus for instruction based upon their programs? And Ashley, we'll start with you.
All right. Well, I got the hot seat. So, again, going back to the question as it was framed earlier, if a special interest group, a religiously affiliated special interest group, would approach me, I would follow the district policies and protocols for this particular issue. This would be a situation where I would refer back to the superintendent's office. I would refer that special interest group to connect with the superintendent's office or offer to take their concerns to the superintendent, but I would not be willing to do anything or make any actions or promises or support beyond referring them through the appropriate channels and protocols.
Okay, thank you. Carrie.
I agree with Ashley. I think it... in order to know whether I would support that as one of five on the board is hard to say, based on what the details of that would be, but knowing what I know from the question, it would be very important, I think, for us to gather more information as a board, to look to the superintendent for her expertise, to understand the goals of this group, and do they align with the extracurriculars that we offer otherwise from our school system, or might it be that they would interfere with our instruction and make an informed decision based on more information?
Thank you. David.
I agree with both Ashley and Carrie. The first thing I would do is I'd sit down with the superintendent and go over what the plan is, what this particular group wants to do with our students that they can't do inside our facilities, and have a discussion about that. I would, and I do this regularly at board meetings, I raise the legal concerns, because of my training. You know, what are the legal ramifications of taking the students off of our, out of our facilities into another place? I would do background checks on the people who want the special interest group or individuals, and then review the policies that we have in place in the district regarding this type of activity. I would very much gather as much information as possible and discuss it at length with the board.
Okay, thank you. Next question from the audience. We have touched on, but we will go back to it, and I'm going to rephrase it just a little bit. Tell us the one thing that the district is doing extremely well, and then on the opposite, the one thing, the most important thing that the district needs to improve upon. And David, we'll start with you.
I think what we're doing the best right now is we're taking data that we receive and using that data to initiate extra activities for the students. You know, pulling them out of class, getting them up to the level they need to be at. Our test scores have been good because of that, because we have intervention programs that we've initiated, and we've been very strong at that, and we've done very good with that. I think what we need improvement on, and there's been a lot of discussion among board members lately, is our students who are English second language and meeting their needs. Unfortunately, we have a big group of those students in our community, and we have to educate them. Some of these private schools and voucher schools don't. We have to, and we need to work better on meeting their needs.
Thank you. Carrie.
It's hard to choose, because I think there are so many successes and challenges that we're having. One of the things that I think Hamilton City Schools are doing really well are finding new and innovative ways to prepare older students for life beyond high school. And I've been very impressed, especially in my involvement in the high school through my own child, to see that we have so many opportunities to give our kids, whether they're college-bound or technical, career-bound, or if they are planning to leave school and go right into the workforce. And we've created a jobs database and someone who's dedicated to helping them find a job right out of school. So I think that's something we're doing really well. And honestly, I agree with Dave on what we need to do more of, and that is to help our language-challenged children get the resources they need and get up to speed with learning the language and therefore being able to get a better education.
Thank you. Ashley Hopkins.
Yeah, I think the one thing that we're doing remarkably well is implementing a student-centered learning model. This shows up in our test data. We are outperforming the 20 most comparable districts year after year, and we continue to see growth and improvement in our students. We continue to see expanded opportunities through stronger partnerships with the city, through stronger partnerships with local businesses and industries, with Miami University Regionals, for example. So I think we are really excelling in terms of the opportunities that we are providing our students to really, again, define for themselves what it means to be successful, define their connection to the community, and their place here in Hamilton. In terms of what we can do a little better or an area for improvement, and I'll go with something a little different than my colleagues here, is one of the things I continuously hear is that communication, bringing communication in all directions and with all parties to the forefront. This is going to be really important in addressing those recruitment challenges and the lowering enrollment rates. So really communicating our excellence, what we are doing, and what opportunity we provide, as well as smoothing that communication between the school, the family, and the community.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions, and now each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement, and we will start with David Davidson.
Thank you. I want to thank Dan again and the Miami Regionals for hosting this tonight. Hamilton is my hometown. I was raised here, I was educated here, and I raised my family here. I got a great education out of the Hamilton City Schools, enough that I went on to college, went on to law school. I chose to come back here and start a practice. I am very proud of Hamilton, and I'm very proud of our schools. I've served this community for decades, on city council and on school board and as an attorney. I know what it means to fight for Hamilton families, and I am asking you for your support to continue that service. I am incredibly proud of the progress our schools have made, but I'm not here to coast. I am here to keep pushing forward. My top priorities are ensuring every student feels safe, every classroom supports academic growth, and every school remains a source of pride in our community. That includes focusing on workforce readiness, strong partnerships with local businesses, and celebrating the success stories happening in our classrooms every day. As a board member, I will bring collaboration, common sense, and calm leadership. I will listen to every stakeholder, but never forget that our students come first. I will work alongside board members and the superintendent to make sure that safety, transparency, and student achievement are more than just buzzwords. They are commitments that we live out in every decision. We are just not a school district, we are a community. The future of Hamilton is tied to the success of our students. If you re-elect me, you'll get someone who shows up, speaks up, and puts kids first. I'm ready to keep doing the work, and I ask for your support. One note, these questions, we gave quick answers to, and I'm sure all three of us would love, if anybody has further questions about these, because we just hit talking points, but they're very in-depth subjects, and we'd be more than happy to discuss those with any of you that have further questions on these. And again, thank you.
Thank you, David Davidson. Carrie Mancuso, your closing statement.
Thanks, Dan. My priorities as a school board member include, but are not limited to, advocating for students first, last, and always, bringing apparent perspective to the board, supporting the school administration and educators in working toward positive outcomes, using my knowledge of Hamilton and my community and city network to help maintain strong connections between the schools and our families, the city, and the community as a whole. The school system has so many incredible offerings to students for all ages, far too many to list here. There's so much to be proud of, and I want to see those things highlighted for our families and our taxpayers to know about and be proud to support and take advantage of. We also have some big challenges, as any large urban school district does. We must work not only to meet those challenges head-on, but prepare for what's to come with proactive measures. I want to see us meet our challenges with the same transparency that we tout our successes. I look forward to being an advocate for our teachers, staff, and students. I will be accessible and devoted to helping guide the administration of Hamilton City Schools. I am committed to... I am committed to leaning into my deep roots within the community, my existing partnerships and connections, and my love for the school district and the city to do the best job in this position that I can do. My campaign slogan is "Hamilton Educated, Hamilton Proud." And I'm not just proud of Hamilton, I'm very proud of my Hamilton education, just as I'm proud of my child's Hamilton education. I'm honored to be a candidate for Hamilton City School Board, and I really look forward to getting started.
Thank you, Carrie. Ashley Hopkins, your closing statement.
Thanks, Dan, and thanks to the Chamber, Miami Regionals, TV Hamilton, thanks to everyone who's here or listening in tonight, and special thanks to my campaign team, Mr. Tyler McCleary, Ms. Rose Hurley, Ms. Emily Wooden, and to my ever-supportive husband who's managed to not even fall asleep back there tonight, and all the other folks that have offered me their support to this point. In closing, I'm Dr. Ashley Hopkins, and I'm running for Hamilton City School Board because public education changed my life, and I believe every student deserves that same opportunity. I'm a proud product of public schools and a first-generation college graduate. I know what it means to rely on a great education to open doors that weren't open before. And after 20 years of working in public education myself, I've dedicated my life to making sure other students have the same chances that I had. I've been in the classroom, I've supported teachers, I've worked alongside families. I know the challenges that our schools face, and I know what works. I'm running because I believe our students deserve more than one-size-fits-all solutions. They deserve Board members who listen, who understand the system, and who are focused on what really matters: student success, teacher support, and strong, safe schools. This isn't about politics, it's about priorities. Every decision we make should reflect the needs of our students, the expertise of our educators, and the voices of our community. I'm not running to climb a political ladder, I'm running to give back to the system that gave me everything. If you believe in the power of public education and in the promise of every child, I'm asking for your support. Let's work together to build a school system that lifts everyone. You can follow my campaign, I would hope that you would be interested in doing so, on Facebook and Instagram at vote.cop, or on my campaign website at vote.cop.com, because a vote for Doc is a vote for kids. So thank you all very much, I appreciate your time, and I look forward to listening to you and serving you as a school board member for Hamilton City Schools.
Thank you very much. I'm Dan Bates with the Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce. Special thank you to Miami Regionals, TV Hamilton, and the candidates who did an amazing job tonight and gave us great insight into their perspective. And to the audience, thank you for attending and participating, and my message to you is get out and vote. Thank you. That concludes our forum.[1793.63][1793.63]